To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you please say the prayer?
Yes. Father in heaven, we come to you before in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you for everything that you've done for us. We thank you for the love and the kindness and the mercy that you've shown us on a day to day. God, we ask that your will will be done. God, we ask for your guidance and your protection. Lord, we also ask for your forgiveness, Lord, as a city and as individuals, Father God. We ask that he will strengthen us and to make the right choices and guide us down the right path, Lord, in the mighty, mighty name of your son, Bishoel. Amen.
Amen.
Here, roll call, please.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
She'll be late. I just got a text.
Okay. Counselor Segala.
Here.
Counselor Ellathor.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
Quorum.
Any modifications to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If the council would actually request this meeting that we withdraw ordinance 896 and we'll put it on the next meeting agenda. So new the 896 ordinance to the September...
Something.
Nineteenth.
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 Cut it.
I move that we modify the agenda to strike ordinances, ordinance 896, updating the Montevista noise ordinance, section eight dash seven dash one zero zero from this meeting and add it to the agenda for the September nineteenth meeting.
It's been moved and seconded to move the ordinance 896 update to the September nineteenth agenda. Any more discussion?
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Segala.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, approval of consent agenda.
Profile one.
Oh, I would approve the... Oh, it was... Sorry. Would we accept the consent agenda as amended?
I second that motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, minutes of regular reading and review and approval of council paper. Any more discussion? Aaron.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Segala.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathor.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Forrest, this next one for you. Proclamation, communication, appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony. Come on, come on, Tony, don't be brave. So, most of you may know Tony. He's been with the city just over fifteen years. Unfortunately, Rob couldn't be here this evening. He wanted to be able to present this, but he's not here, so I'm going to read what he wrote.
You okay?
Yeah. So, you know, Tony's been with the city for over fifteen years. In that time, he has become our lead operator and demonstrates daily his knowledge of water and sewer systems, but is also wealth of knowledge on our system. His knowledge comes from experience and I use him frequently to help with questions and concerns about the systems, but also to help our citizens with their questions. Tony is also one of the individuals that can always be counted on. If we call, he comes and helps out regardless of the task, day or night. He is truly an asset to the department, to the city, and I'm proud to have him working for me, our department, and the city. And I'd second that. You do a great job, Forrest. And this is a kind of a cool new award that Bob Gill, our HR guy, got together. It's a fifteen-year service award. So, there you go, Tony.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you get your picture? Thank you, Tony. Appreciate everything you do.
Good job, man.
Okay, citizen comment, special presentations. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, please follow the appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. We have Juan, Rio Grande County Health.
All right. Evening. How is everyone today?
Good. How are you?
Good. Thank you very much for allowing me a little time on the agenda. I know many of you, but my name's Emily Brown. I'm the public health director for Rio Grande County, and I'm here with Toni Stefan Stewart. She's the deputy at our department, and Paul Wertz, he's the public health nurse of the county. So, I could talk to you about many things, but the main reason that I'm here today is we wanted to start having some discussions in the county about a harm reduction needle exchange program. So, I'll talk a little more about this, but basically, per state statute, if specifically a needle exchange program is run in the county, it has to be approved by the board of health for the local public health agency. So, since that is the board that I work under, we are starting to go out into the community just to take information and allow some opportunities for questions and discussion. So, that's what I'm here to do today. I think probably many of you are aware of some of the information of why we're even having these discussions, but to kind of level the playing field, I want to start off with just a little data. Two years ago, in 2017, there were almost nine hundred and seventy drug overdoses in Colorado. So, to kind of put that in perspective, that means that more people died in Colorado in 2017 than from car crashes, which was just over six hundred people, and from the flu, which was just over five hundred people. So, it's a big number, and over the last fifteen years, those numbers have almost doubled. And the San Luis Valley is... has very high rates for comparing the rest of the state, San Luis Valley and kind of southern rural Colorado. So, we know this is an issue, and we know, I'm sure you've been hearing this, counsel, if you've talked to your... the police department. And a big part of that is that we are seeing increases, and we've been seeing them for the past, you know, seven years or so here, especially related to prescription drugs and opioids. So, there's a lot going on to try to stim this issue. Around seven years ago, providers in the valley got together, and it was actually a pretty big deal because providers are a little competitive about who their clients are, but they got together to try to have some consistent practices about how people get prescription drugs and try to avoid having doctor shopping and get some policies in place for the valley. So, that was a good start, and that really... that was a big deal for our area. But unfortunately, we keep seeing those numbers go up, and that was around the same time we were starting to see a little more heroin coming into the area. So, we still have some current stuff going on. I'm sure you are aware of the LEAD project that the city police participates in, and basically, that's a diversion program. So, if someone is... has a touch with law enforcement for a drug-related crime, instead of getting them into the law enforcement system and legal system, they are connected with counseling and resources to try to work on their addiction. So, that's one of the projects going on in the valley. Project Alto is another one. So, that's something that is... our three emergency rooms in the valley are working on, and it's basically kind of a alternate that when someone goes into the emergency room for pain, the emergency room providers all have a lot of other options for helping to deal with pain versus just giving prescription opioids. You maybe have also heard of medication-assisted treatment, or MAT. So, this is basically using medication to assist in getting through an opioid addiction. So, you may be familiar with terms like methadone or buprenorphine or suboxone. These are different medications that can be prescribed at a clinic, such as the methadone clinic in Alamosa, or at a provider's office. And we now have several providers that have gone through the federal requirements to be a prescriber in the clinic, and so it's a little less scary to go to your doctor and do this versus going to maybe a specific location. So, I just list those off because there's things happening in the valley that are trying to help assist with this. But one of the other options is a harm reduction or syringe access program. And there are multiple Colorado laws that have helped support this, and there's evidence of this being a supportive procedure in other areas. And over the last couple of years, SLV AHEC, which is the Area Health Education Center, and they do a lot of work with provider education, they've worked really closely with public health, especially in Alamosa, and last February, they started one up, a harm reduction program in Alamosa. So, we now have an operating one in the valley, and it's kind of a big deal because there are multiple other programs. There's about seven programs in the state, but they're all in really big cities like El Paso or Grand Junction or Boulder. And so, this is the first rural program. And one of the things when that first started that we wanted to try to look into as it got going was to try to move it around the valley because we know that transportation's a really big issue, and if we were wanting to really help the whole valley, it needs to be a program that comes to other locations versus just being in Alamosa. So, in general, harm reduction is the idea that it's either a policy, or a program, or a practice that aims to minimize negative impacts of drug use. So, it's not a practice that's meant to promote drug use, but rather, it's the idea that we know drug use is occurring, we know that this is an issue in our community, and it's simply another option like those other programs that I listed off for addressing use in our community and providing alternatives and care. The program in the valley runs with a needle exchange program. So, it is, when you sign up, when a person comes and becomes a member of the program, they can bring back dirty needles in a safe container and be disposed of correctly, and then they get back clean needles. And the idea around that is that they are not disposing them in the ditches or in the parks, or in the trashcans where your public workspeople take it out and can have the opportunity to get sticked, coming back and it's getting disposed of properly. It's also the idea that you can transmit diseases by using dirty needles, so HIV, hepatitis. And you can also, if you have needles that have been used multiple times and they start to get not as sharp and not as... they're bad needles, you can get big wounds that can cause a lot of health issues for the person, and it's really expensive for the medical system. So, it's trying to avoid some of those things. There's also a lot of other services at the program in Alamosa, such as hepatitis and HIV testing, training on how to deal with overdoses, and referrals to counselors or medication-assisted treatment, or even just primary care. So, it's a really comprehensive program. And the program in Alamosa, which we would kind of model to... if it was... if there was an interest in bringing it into Rio Grande County, runs just three hours once a week in the morning on Wednesdays. There's a broad range of who comes and the different types of people. Since it started in February, there's been about three hundred people that have used the services. Some come back once, some come back every week, and about sixty of those individuals are from our county. So, the next logical step in the discussion we've had as public health and at the region is to see if we could better serve our clients or people in our community by having it locally and be able to connect them to service providers that are here in the community versus then having to go all the way to Alamosa. So, there has been an interest from some of the people that go there, and there's been interest in some of the providers that are in the area. So, we're starting to bring this to the community to answer questions and get feedback and thoughts. So, just to close my presentation, I wanted to give Paul just a few minutes to talk because he actually goes down at least once a month to do a... to go help volunteer there, and I think he's got a really good perspective of how that program's running in real life and what it would look like if it came into our county.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors, for hearing us. I really just wanted to, you know, have this opportunity to tell you about the program a little bit and that emphasize that this is not a safe injection site whatsoever. It is truly just a harm reduction program. To me, the needles are kind of a little lure to get people to come in. From my experience, these people are really looking for treatment and things like that. I brought some data along with me that basically about half of the people that are coming to us and all are actually looking for types of treatment and aren't going to doctors and stuff to find us treatment and all. So, this really gives us a point of access for these individuals that we would never have a chance to offer treatment, counseling, et cetera, to these individuals, as well as then the infectious disease side of things. It is my job basically to control, monitor, and, you know, find out about any infectious communicable diseases going around and keep them from spreading in our community. And this is really an ideal way. We get to test these individuals for these communicable diseases, give them vaccines to prevent those diseases, as well as then offer them treatment and counseling every time they're coming in. Been working with this program for about a year now on a volunteer basis, and I believe that it's a good fit for our community. A lot of the people who come in are asking, "And are you going to do this in Montevista?" Del Norte, it's so hard for us to make it all the way to Alamosa. So, kind of basically, I have to say, I definitely can answer any questions directly related to the program. If you guys have any questions related to this program.
Maybe before I open it up, just so you know, kind of our steps of what we're doing right now, we're talking to you this week, we're talking to Del Norte Town Council next Wednesday. I have a board of health meeting next Thursday, so they've been in the know, but we'll be having that discussion. And then we'll probably schedule over the next couple of months, multiple community meetings, so we have the opportunity to take this information out to the community and get feedback in our county. And then depending on how that feedback goes, if there is an interest in moving forward, and maybe that December meeting for our board of health, or possibly the March one, would be the time when we would go. And if it was approved, then there would be discussions with SLV AHEC and the program there to see about moving forward and where it'd be going. Is there any questions from councilors, mayor, anything you'd like to clarify?
Yeah, I might... we've talked about this a little bit, but you mentioned you've been working with this for...
For approximately a year.
For the last year, and you've seen, I guess I'd never heard that part before. It makes sense that there are some that are actually coming in asking for help, people that you wouldn't be able to help or reach or even talk to.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, is there any... you have any result?
I would love to share this data I got for me. The first two pages are charts across the spectrum, the whole program, and the second page is broken down into just Rio Grande County. Many of the people are very skeptical when they first come in and very scared, don't know if we're the police and we're going to arrest them. But I have found after three or four visits, they do become much more comfortable, and by three or four times of visiting us, many of them are saying, "Yes, I would like to talk to a counselor, and I would like to, you know, see what treatment looks like."
What is... is there data to back up like the success rate on the rehabilitation of these people?
Yeah, so, really, kind of when we look at data for any of these needle exchange programs, it's pretty similar to just what addiction looks like in general, and especially opioid use disorders. We see from possibilities of like seven to eleven times that you may relapse that many times before you're fully recovered. So, some of that data aligns pretty closely with what kind of some of the success rates are for these kind of programs. So, it's a process, and some people are at that stage and willing, and they're ready to try, and some people, it can happen right away. Some people take that seven to eleven times if they're willing. But the big part about a needle exchange or a harm reduction program is it's an opportunity to get people in a way that... connect with people in a way that maybe they're not. So, if their, you know, family can be frustrated, or you go to a provider and you feel like you're stigmatized because you can't actually talk about the situations you're going through, and a harm reduction program because it's meeting people where they're at, they have the opportunity where maybe for a year, they're not ready, and they just come to get needles, and they're just stopping by, and then something happens in their life or it's just time, and they finally have... they have trusted people that they built a relationship with that when they're at that point to ask for help, they can connect with those other providers. So, I'm not going to lie and say that it's the magic pill, but it's another opportunity there.
The rates aren't any better. Treatment is treatment, whether it's through us or another way. It just gives us the access to give people treatment that may not have otherwise even reached out for treatment, really. I can say the rates of us receiving the needles back is matching the needles we're putting out there. So, we are... they are not sitting in our streets, in our parks, in our county, or in Alamosa County. They are coming back to us, and we are disposing of them properly.
So, the funding for this, is it federally funded?
Yeah, so, it's a mix. SLV AHEC has done a really good job putting together some funding. It doesn't take a lot, really, because it's basically a few of the supplies, like the needles, and then the time. And how we've been running the Alamosa program so far is AHEC has a couple of mayor corps people that have members that use... that have kind of been leads for the program, and then Charlotte Ladoni is the kind of staff person there that's leading it. And then public health nurses have come, and we kind of rotate between Alamosa and us and a few of the other counties to volunteer time, and there's also some other community volunteer members that can help staff it. But right now, there is... it's mostly a few different state funds that are kind of communicable disease-related, or there are a few harm reduction. There's also, while it's not going to be sustainable, there is a whole bunch of money coming down related to opioids from the federal and state government just recently here. So, it does look like there will be a little money, at least for a few years here, to help kind of sustain some of that staffing, mostly at AHEC. But... and then also the location where the site is, it's a counseling office. So, it is a normal office, and they allow the space to be used for those three hours for free, so they don't charge for that. And there's just a little storage space, and so between public health and that storage space, they kind of keep it there. So, it's fairly low cost. It's mostly, you know, if as we expand, it'll be finding some sustainability for AHEC to kind of lead running it. And then we is... county public health will pick up a few of the minor costs, like covering staff time to go, and then the disposal of the needles, because we have a contract, a stair cycle for that.
Treatment sites actually provided by Medicaid often. These people are often underinsured or uninsured, and we'll sign them up for and get them on Medicaid, try to get them providers at that time as well when they come through our door. So, often, if they are choosing treatment and all, we can do that through Medicaid payment.
So, what other stuff lies in this, the whole picture, the whole roundtable?
Clean needles, that's... So, we're providing clean needles given they've returned them. They get their initial time, they're going to get a small amount, about forty syringes. If they bring some back, they're able to get more, about seventy syringes. We also provide them with clean usable material other than the syringe itself. So, a container to mix their drugs up in, basically, cotton, which they use as a filter to draw up their drugs in as well.
I know that sounds a little like...
It does.
Giving out stuff that's...
This is... these are things that are all the contaminated disease sites. This is how the disease is spread, so we want them using all completely clean materials, really, is what that comes to. We, on a monthly basis, we do hepatitis testing and HIV testing, and treatment is necessary. You know, refer to treatment if it is necessary. We've also been out providing vaccines for the individuals. For instance, there's been some hepatitis outbreaks, especially within homeless populations here in Colorado, so we've done some outreach, providing vaccines, just preventing that. We haven't had any outbreaks in our valley so far, thank God. Then we are providing the counseling services, the medication-assisted treatment services.
And we'll kind of see if it moves into Rio Grande County. We're really lucky right now to have a partnership with Valleywide. They have their big mobile van, and so they park it at the location on the days when the harm reduction program's going. And so, if someone wants to get referred to services, they can just be walked right outside the door, talk to the provider. They've had a couple times a week, one of their providers that does medication-assisted treatment, and they can induce them right there. So, we've talked with some of the healthcare providers in the valley, and we're lucky in Rio Grande County that SLV Health, Valleywide, and Rio Grande Hospital all operate clinics of some sort here. So, I think... and they're all on board, along with Behavioral Health, who has a clinic, to figure out how they support resources. So, it could look like the van being there, it could look like being in one of the offices, or having some of those providers connect. So, I think that there's a willingness for healthcare providers to make sure the same level of services are here too.
So, there are healthcare professionals and councilors?
Yes.
At the site?
On-site, every time. There are councilors, there are nurses, and sometimes providers and doctors. It's not always a doc, but there's always nurses and councilors, absolutely.
It's not just one person?
No. We usually are staffed by eight or ten people at times because we have office work paperwork to be done, nursing work to be done, councilors, we all have our own place entirely.
And we have had kind of one meeting so far to talk with mostly the provider and law enforcement community, and timing was bad for law enforcement, so we have to touch base some more on that. But it... there was definitely an interest by the healthcare providers on a need for trying to figure out what this could look like for our county.
So, your purpose in getting through all the communities that you're discussing, it sounds like it's fairly well-established in Alamosa, but you're looking for support or approval?
Yeah. So, ultimately, the board of health, which is currently the three commissioners for the county, and then Carol Schroeder is the rep for board of health for MONI, and then there's a rep from both South Fork and Del Norte. So, they could ultimately approve or disapprove it, but we're trying to make sure that it's actually the community voice, and if there's support or not support, that the board is representing those needs. And we have had one offer. Behavioral Health at the new office in Del Norte has said that they would have interest if we wanted to be able to use that space. So, there is some interest or a facility in Del Norte. So, I think that that would ask the main thing for the board, just besides giving information so you can mull it over, and as you're hearing from constituents, if there's concerns or questions, you can refer them our direction. But also, if there is interest in having a location more in Montevista, we would appreciate any input or thoughts of where that location would be, or who would be the people to talk to for that, or if you're helping Del Norte or the other way. So, we'll kind of see how things move along there.
Can I just ask, Chief, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's a really good program because I think it's hard to understand. Paul makes a great point because while they may not be seeking to get clean, everybody wants to get clean. I mean, drug addiction is ugly, and what he really wants to stay addicted. And if there's a link between some sort of safety that gets them in there, you've got to remember, the cops aren't handing out needles. It's not that hard sell. It's not, "Hey, when are you going to come in to get clean? When are you going to quit doing this junk?" That's not it. These people are really good at knowing what it's like to be in that position and how to take the stigma and lack of judgment. That's the end that sometimes gets these people clean. "So, here's a needle. Thank you so much. I'm treated like a human, not a drug addict. Next time I come in, even better. That third time, maybe I ask for help, and I get clean." So, I think it's very powerful, a little spooky for the citizens, they don't understand it. There's a lot of change that needs to be done, but this is just one of those steps, I think, in changing the dynamic of addiction, and it's bad here. I mean, it really has some negative effects, you know, from the little sores that Emily was talking about to all the way to overdosing. It's a big deal, and to have a clean, healthy society, I think it's going to take this kind of effort, just like LEAD, to get past what we all have been kind of, you know, brainwashed into thinking of what the drug war looks like. This is what the drug war looks like, not what we've done on board. We couldn't arrest our way out of this problem, but we can, I think, if we can clean this problem up by getting help, but they have to want the help first. And I think safety is a much easier hook than what really the trauma and all the counseling that's going to take to get past it. So, kudos. Why wouldn't we do MONI? We know we have a drug problem. We know, you know, it's scary, I get it, when all of a sudden now you have a reason for addicts to be walking around your neighborhood for a little while. They're already walking around. They're already walking around the neighborhood, you know. I mean, I think, that's just kind of one of those things that we have to get past, have to get better. We have to get maybe a little bit more brave to get better.
I want to make a couple of comments, just from what Chief had said. One, several of the other harm reduction programs in the state have said this, but I got to go visit the one in Pueblo, and they specifically said that there was concern when it came into the location in the neighborhood, but that they've actually found that that spot is one of the least drug-using areas, because the clients that come in for this program value it so much. And there are, like, when you become a member of the program, there's a few rules, like that you are not allowed to use any drugs on premises or within a certain area, and they self-enforce very strongly. So they want to make sure that they, there is no reason that this program doesn't continue. And then also, the piece of why we are trying to make sure we reach out to law enforcement is, one, we need to make sure law enforcement's on board and understands this program, because it's never gonna work if we're saying this is where it is, and we have a patrol car that's right down the block waiting to see who's coming in and out. So there needs to be the trust in both communities. But then also, one of the state statutes that links with harm reduction programs is that when you become, it's kind of calling, becoming a member of a program, you get sort of a little business card that says you're a member of this harm reduction program. And if you get stopped by a police officer, and you've just come out and you have drug paraphernalia, like needles, on you, you can tell the officer, I'm part of this program and I have these needles on you, so then the officer doesn't have the chance of getting stuck by a needle as he's patting you down and trying to take something. And they are allowed to have that. If you have drugs in the needles, that's a different story. But it protects, it protects the individual to keep having their clean paraphernalia and be able to have that to use, and it protects the officers, so they are staying a little safer there as well. So just another piece to add there. Thank you for taking the time. We will be out talking, and we'll make sure you know when we have the community meetings. So keep asking questions, keep touching base. And while I have you here, I'm just gonna pass this. This is just an updated service of some of the things we as public health do, some of our programs, or some of the opportunities. So just keep that. We are happy at any point to come back. I know I've come a couple years ago, I think, and did just a little overview. So if there's anything, especially around needing health data, or trying to do assessments, or if public works, or if recreation has something that's trying to support activities for kids, or help the community members, we're happy to help find ways to support and build up those projects. So give us a call. Thank you.
Before you guys walk back from the podium, do you sign a paper, if you would? And then I want to thank you for being here, because I was, when I read this, I was a little skeptical about what, very well explained. So you two did a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
And before I go, I wanted to just throw in, I've worked with this group for the last several years, under the moniker of Rio Grande Prevention Partners. Just so that we all understand, the whole purpose of that organization is in the title. It's about prevention, and it's about solving the problem, and certainly not placating in any way, so appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you.
Citizen comments. City Council, off of your unscheduled comments, please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. Margot?
Yes, sir. Hello, Council, hello, Mayor. My voice gives out. I'll try and be good here. Margaret Hurd couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me if I would read this on her behalf. I have asked Margot to read a statement from me about all the noise in town coming from Lunatic Motorsports. I have not checked into the noise ordinance that the city has in place, but I have called dispatch several times complaining of noise and speeding on Adams Street and Third Avenue. All conversations cease inside and outside of our home. You cannot even talk on the phone. The noise from the vehicles is heard for miles. If you are a business in town, it is disruptive and disrespectful, because the noise invades the whole building, and everything ceases in that business. I have been awakened at four-ten and six-twenty in the morning on a Sunday from the noise. Two things concern me. One, being that a child or elderly person might be hit or badly hurt, even killed, as the cars roar down the street, testing their performance. Second, my husband was a Vietnam helicopter pilot, taking troops into the fight and bringing them back home, back to base. His helicopter had gunners on both sides of the valley firing continuously, plus the enemy firing at him and his crew. That was every day for thirteen months. Sometimes he thinks he's being fired upon. Several times, he has asked me to take him to the police department so that he can file a complaint. Are there other veterans equally affected? I've witnessed the vehicles even screaming down Sherman Avenue. I feel that a designated area outside the city limits for testing the performance of a vehicle is needed for the safety of the Montevista citizens. Also, I would suggest a certain hours for noise abatement. I also would like to see Sunday honored as a day of rest. Thank you for your consideration, Margaret Hurd. And I have to attest to this, I've lived here six years, Adams Street has just totally turned into a racetrack, and the noise, it's not every day, but pretty close to it, roaring down our street and zipping around. And if I'm on the phone, I have to stop talking, because I can't hear the other person on the phone. So just put this out, and I want to thank you for, I see Sonic has actually got rid of the truck, it's gone. Still a little more to do, thank you. And also, what is the status of Dairy Queen and the asphalt? But thank you, because you guys have done a good job. City looks good, still looks good. So thank you.
Thank you, Margot.
Can I shake it up, Chief?
I'll sign in as myself, not as my physician. Emily Brown, I just wanted to, I'm excited, I was hearing about the progress for Sky High, so it sounds like things keep moving forward with that. So I know it's a big, huge process, and who knows what timeframe it'll be, but I just wanted to note, and Gary and Jaime are aware of this, that that Rio Grande Prevention Partners Group that is working on youth substance abuse prevention, we had one of our recent meetings, and one of the things that came out, it's one of the priorities that the community, and sorry, Chief Rosecrans is there too, one of the priorities that the group wants to focus on is how to support community spaces in our county. And I would just like to recommend, if the council has any sway in that process, to be able to include the community voices, and especially youth voices, in helping to move forward any of that design, or any of the needs in that building. Please try to make that happen, because I think if we really want to make sure that our community's being supported, and especially just to have a place for people to go, that's not just at rodeo time, or just for fair, or just for an event that raises money for the city, if it can also be a place that is where people want to gather, I would like to recommend that, so. All right, my name is me for that.
We appreciate that support, and as, there's some information that'll be coming out on the ballot, and we'll be talking about it Saturday at the Potato Festival. Having the community support on that is what it's gonna take, because that means we need to man that place a lot more. So the financial side of that is gonna be important, so we'll need the community support on what we're gonna present.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So I'm here tonight to present the financials as of June 30th, 2019. As you are well aware, fifty percent of the year has elapsed since then, or as of June 30th. Revenues were at fifty-eight percent, so they were a little bit above where we should be, which is good. They came in at $1.7 million, and the largest source remaining tax revenue, so. And in looking at that, we were about ninety-five percent of our property taxes have been collected so far, so doing good there. Expenditures were at forty-eight percent of the approved budget, or about $1.5 million. So as of month-end, the portion of cash in the main checking account for the general fund was $193,000. Total unrestricted cash assets for the year-to-date in the general fund is $691,422. In the general fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by almost $300,000, which increased the fund balance to $1.1 million in the general fund. So that's up from December 31st, we were at $868,000, so it's a thirty-four percent increase, so we're doing, we're doing good. So in the water fund, revenues were at forty-seven percent of the approved budget, or $427,000. Expenditures at the end of the month were at thirty-nine percent, so our revenues are still coming in above our expenditures in the water fund. The unrestricted cash portion in the water fund was $881,000, and the expenditures exceeded, let's see, sorry, you got confused. At month-end, total expenditures in the water fund were at thirty-nine percent, or $604, so. And then the sewer fund, the revenues were at sixty-nine percent of the approved budget, or $632,000. And then majority of that relates to charges for services. Expenditures at month-end in the sewer fund were at thirty-one percent of the approved budget, or $509,000. As of June 30th, unrestricted cash in the sewer fund is $363,000, and revenues exceeded expenditures by $122,000, which brought the fund balance in the sewer fund to a little over $4.3 million. So, any questions? I do have one other little piece for you guys tonight. We have the 2020 budget draft prepared for you. As you know, we have a work session next Tuesday for that. So Forrest and I have prepared kind of a memo narrative that goes into the details of some line items and information in preparation for that, so you can know what we'll be talking about Tuesday night. Okay?
Thank you, Jen.
Yep.
Sound real official, Ben?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'll try to be official. Good evening, Mayor, Counselors. Well, as our Finance Director just alluded to, it's officially budget season. Just elaborate on that a little bit. Finance Director and I have met with each department, we've gone through the budgets. When you get a chance to look at them, the proposed budget is slightly in the black than the general fund. Now, it's our target. I will say that it's not exactly easy to get there. Nobody got everything that they wanted. That never happens, of course, and that's not the expectation, but, you know, it's pretty narrow margin, maybe even more so than last year. But, you know, on a positive note, it isn't positive, you know, in the black, and it is projected to maintain our fund and balance in the general fund of almost a million dollars at the end of 2020. That's our goal, it's not quite there. We hope that we'll actually underspend our allocations and get there, and it's a pretty close number. Why is that million dollars important? Well, you know, one of the issues that we had when I arrived here was that we didn't really have a general fund balance that was substantial, less than $600,000. One of the issues we face, we see this in communities across the nation all the time, is some kind of disaster. And while we're working on disaster preparedness, and yes, the county has disaster folks, and there's the feds and all that, and they will help you, but the money part of that from them comes kind of slowly. So you have to have some available capital to spend in case of disaster. Hopefully, we don't have anything like that. But having some reserves against that, also against unexpected general fund expenses, is very important. You'll also see, when you get into the enterprise funds, that we tried to, you know, maintain what we see as the floors. There are some unexpected expenses in those categories, which are, well, a little unexpected, typically one of the expenses in the sewer fund. But the idea this year is that you have a memo that actually goes through before we have a workshop, and kind of explains where those are at, what those cost centers are, so you can all have a look at those. I don't think there's any fluff in there. You know, you may think differently, but it's pretty tight all across the board. Nevertheless, the budget does provide for us to continue to provide all the services that we currently are undertaking. We do have a paving project yet this year. You see, we have a sidewalk project, and it was supposed to be next week, but the contractor called and said I could start early, and, you know, concrete contractors, they could start early, you get them in there. So that mess was supposed to happen on a non-council week, but here we are. And that particular project, we have a match with a mini grant through SLB Development Resources Group, so we'll get $5,000 of that $11,000 cost back. That's phase one of that project, we'll do the next part next year, but we're moving the spalling that was in front of the handicap accessible parking spaces, as well as that sidewalk has some shifts and lips, and all that'll be gone, and it should last well. We actually had a few people trip on that. The sidewalk wasn't in violation of code, per se, but nevertheless, posed kind of a minor hazard for people. So actually, the day that they started tearing that out, we had somebody trip on the way up, and then he was here for a meeting, and when he was getting ready to leave, goes, you guys do that for me, jokingly, and we're like, yep. So anyway, we look forward to having the budget work session with you next week. So interestingly, regarding the noise, there's two issues there, that one we'll address, one with the business owner in general. And then part of the point of the emergency noise ordinance, which we decided to push off, so y'all can look at the old one, is that, you know, Chief and I have discussed this a number of times, there's, the existing one has some holes in it. It's very lengthy in some regards, but not really in some of the issues that the officers may be called upon to address. So the emergency ordinance, NIDA worked on that fairly extensively, and looking at other communities, what they have, and we try to come up with something that was simple and enforceable. I think the time issues that Councilor Lorenz brought up are very valid, and so we'll probably work those into the draft that you get for the next meeting. As far as that business itself, we will attempt to address that without even, you know, there's obviously some other issues there, so we'll work on that. One of the things that is in the budget, and it's an interesting timing thing, is the DCI Colorado Challenge Program application, and I believe I provided Council with additional materials on that. It's kind of a, we've worked with DCI for, I think, four or five years, and were members of their organization. They came down and did a really great small business seminar about four years ago. It was awesome. It wasn't as well-attended as we would have liked, but the information, it was stellar. And I've kind of worked with DCI and a few other things, and they were at the Economic Development Conference over in Alamosa, and so we started talking about this program. And I think we have a really good opportunity. They had a conference call presentation on this, and basically there are a right amount of potential applicants that were on that call with them, and I think I provided you the slides for that as well. I think it is a good opportunity. We would have to apply for it this month, and it would be in the budget for next year. That is one of the requirements, is that you budgeted, because you have... Um, that is one of the requirements, is that you budgeted, um, because you have a match component. Um, whether we'll actually get accepted or not, I don't know, but, um, that would be in your economic development or community development line items. Um, as far as Sky High goes, Potato Fest this weekend, one of the things that'll feature, and I think it kind of goes to part of what Emily was talking about, um, there's a number of, uh, architectural illustrations of the potential facility. And, uh, parts that we'll have featured at our booth on Saturday actually shows the main, uh, I guess we're calling it the events complex part, which is the current multi-purpose building, and that really is designed to be a community space. Um, in addition to obviously the conferences and stuff that it'll host. Um, Jaime came up with a really good product, uh, that's been in use for a while and is tested, where you can actually lay out basketball courts and volleyball courts, but you can pick them up and store them, so when you have your main events, those floors don't get damaged. So a lot of recreational programming will be, can be featured in there, and that's part of what we're asking the voters for. Um, you know, there's three items in the one cent sales tax, one is to fund an additional officer and equipment for the police department, second is for paving of our streets, and the third is for Sky High, and that's broken into two pieces. One, the recreational programming, and the second part, operation and maintenance of the facility. And that's always been an issue here of us being able to operate and maintain the facility. If the facility takes off like the way it probably can, and the second part of the facility, which we don't have a board for, because that's not part of our issue, Front of Sky High Park will be raising money for the buildings. Um, down at the chamber, they actually have a model of the buildings, which is pretty cool. And that second part is really the conference center with meeting rooms and those kind of things, which can be used by the community year-round as well, for meetings and get-togethers and, you know, weddings and celebrations and birthday parties and all that, but the main space will be very adaptable for all our recreational programs, and, you know, Jaime's had a lot of input on that, and I really feel like, so far in the design, if there's some things we miss or there's ideas that they can get to Jaime or to me, um, we have plenty of input on that. It's a big, kind of blank canvas with a lot of potential recreational program. We see that as creating really, you know, three hundred and fifty days a year of recreational opportunities. So we're really excited about that, and that's our portion of that is operations and maintenance and the recreational program. The Front of Sky High will raise the funds to build the buildings. Um, I, I have to apply both the builders and the architects. Uh, I've worked with architects for twenty years, and I would say that, you know, Spencer Architects are incredibly responsive. Um, we've had numerous design meetings with them and said, oh, well, what about this and that, and they've made the changes very readily. Um, it's a really good team, so, um, we are, you know, very excited about that, and hopefully the voters will be as well. Um, one thing I did want to address tonight, which is not my report, but, um, occasionally you find things on Facebook that, um, are a little bothersome. And there's a thread on Facebook right now of utility customers that have issues with the city, and, you know, um, I recognize that, and I did post back to that on Facebook, and essentially wanted to read what I posted back or a summary of it tonight, so that if people watching on YouTube, the people that see this on Facebook, basically what I said is, if you have an issue with the city's billing, with your meters, or with what's going on with your water and sewer utility accounts, um, at this point, you know, I don't know how many customers that affects. We have twenty-five hundred customers, um, it looked like there's thirty or forty customers, potentially customers, that have issues, and I invited them to contact me directly, particularly via email, and why did I put my email address there? Because then we have a record of what the issue is, right? If they tell me on the phone, that's great, what did I tell them? Well, you know, in order to make sure that the answers are clear that we give, um, having an email that I can respond to, and if we need to meet face to face, uh, you know, we're certainly willing to do that. We have, um, you know, kind of evolved our customer service in utility billing, and, you know, Aaron, um, does a great job up front, working with the customers, and Diana Smith, uh, does our A P A R, and then we have Jenny, and, you know, I'm pretty darn familiar with, I can't run all the computer stuff, honestly, but they can get me any report I need. And we pulled reports for some of these customers today, and I'm more than happy to talk to them. You know, we wanted to get to the bottom of it, um, you know, and there are, things happen, I mean, meters do go bad. Uh, unfortunately, anything that's mechanical can wear out, so if we have customers where we need to replace a meter or do something like that, we will do that. Um, you know, so we really do try to work with our customers, and the Public Works crew does a great job, you know, but we can't help people with items that we haven't identified. So trying to reach out to folks, and, uh, maybe I'm getting a little bit more in the weeds than I need to on it, but I want to make sure that we try to resolve their issues. So if you have anyone that's a customer that has a complaint or an issue with their utility billing or the utility services, you know, refer to me, I'll be happy to, um, spend some time on this problem along with our staff, see if we can resolve that. You know, we have, um, a great amount of data, uh, you know, one of the issues, people said that our readers, meters don't get read. Well, the meter readers are electronic device, and they create for every route, a big old report, right? And, uh, we don't usually print these out, but we have these reports. And this would show, like, for this particular route, when the route was run, it shows the date it was run, the time that the meter was read, the previous mean, reading, the current reading, what the consumption level is, um, actually what the manufacturer of the meter is, and the address along with the account ID. So if you have a customer that has concern about whether the meter's read or not, you can actually go and look at that. Now, there are some meters that are more difficult to read because of dogs in the yard or other issues, and sometimes in the winter, um, when there's, you know, a lot of snow and a bad storm, we don't always do that, but we use averageing in the litter. And I do want to point out, and I think most people know this, but during our winter period, we actually allow fif- you know, fifteen thousand gallons for the base rate, so people can drip their faucets, so their services do not freeze up. In the summer, your base rate gets you five thousand gallons. So that's part of the base rate, you go over that, it costs more. Um, you know, we've had a lot of billing questions over the last week or so, and if you look at when the billing period was, so, you know, it's August consumption, right? And people water a lot in August, it was hot, and so they do get higher bills. But, like, once again, we're willing to look at anybody's, uh, utility issue and see if we can figure it out. I got a really good staff that can support that, and so, um, if anybody has those issues, I'm happy to try to help them out. And unless you all have any questions, um, I'm done. If you have a need for an executive session this evening, it should be brief, and, uh, we have our workshop, uh, on September tenth. Um, now we'll state, again, you know, so our, our, basically our charter says that, um, the city manager needs to provide you with a draft budget um, at your first meeting in October. And, uh, last year, we, we asked for an extension from the council to do that, um, so we actually did in November. And this year, our target is to have a draft in front of you that you've all worked on and that we've all worked on, um, hopefully for first reading at the first meeting in October. We would like to be done with the budget process before the end of October this year. For a number of reasons, it makes November, December a little simpler, um, for year-end and such, but, um, we also have an election this year, so, um, we're going to be focused on providing technical support and information for the public. Um, you know, people have asked me, you know, can city staff come and make presentations, and we can, but we prefer to be elected officials, because city staff can only provide information, we cannot be advocates of state law. It's an interesting state law, I guess, but that's what the law says, so. And I, I'm going to ask the council for, I need to volunteer for October first, um, for Rotary, we were invited to come present to them. Um, so that's at eleven forty-five on the first, y'all can think about it, but hopefully someone would, uh, volunteer to, and I will come with you and provide technical support, and if anybody needs brochures, uh, we've had some, um, nice outreach from members of the community, and we're providing brochures to entities like the Chamber and others, and individuals as well. So if any individuals want to get, um, well-informed on the issue, and they want to take out brochures and talk to people, we certainly welcome that. And if any of the public has questions about the election, um, I'm happy to talk to them about that, I'm fairly well-versed as well as our finance director, um, who actually prepared our, uh, brochures, and we appreciated your input on that, Kathy, that was actually really helpful, so. I think, um, you know, we have the materials we need, and, you know, from a media presentation standpoint, we're going to concentrate on October. Uh, simply because there's so much information in the world right now that, you know, you're thirty days out of something, you're in there. We'll get that going before the mail-out ballots come out, but, um, yeah. So that's really all I have to rattle on about tonight, if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you for doing all that, Forrest.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
And, uh, thank, thank you for, uh, responding to that, Trey.
Well, and, and it is a concern, and, you know, every customer is important to us, and, you know, some of them seem like they may have had some long-term issues, but if we're not aware of them, or they didn't get the customer service they needed in the past, I'd like them to try again, and hopefully we can help them out. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. Mr. Trigill. Trying to be real professional.
Okay, I'll try, it's pretty tough. Mayor, Council, thank you, uh, don't have a real long report, uh, but, uh, starting out with the city court, uh, very, very busy, uh, day, though, it was really in, uh, August, but, uh, moving a lot of folks through the, through the courts and through the system, and, and with regard to the drug issue, certainly there is a drug issue here and drug problem, and, but the one thing I think that's working very well for us is the diversion program, where we're catching the young people and hopefully getting their attention. I don't believe anybody's come back and been charged again after going through that program, so certainly we think that trying to get people to avoid getting into that problem and preventing the problem is, is where we hit, or what we're trying to do, and it seems to be working pretty well. Um, next couple of months are going to be real busy again in the courts, and maybe until the summer starts slowing us down. But things are working very well, running, running people through and getting things done. Uh, been working with Forrest on, uh, uh, some agreements on the city properties that we're leasing out, that are coming up for sale. We've had some issues with the Three Guys business and property that we, we, we got the property from Real Grand, but there were some restrictions in the, in the deed, and they sound very harmless until you go to borrow money from the banks, or they go to their lawyer and go, oh, what's this mean? We can't do something with the property, we might have to lose it after we put a bunch of money in it. So Forrest and I met with Sean Davis at Real Grand, and, uh, and I met with him a couple of times, and I think we're going to get those issues resolved, I think we're just about there to getting those done, and, but Sean's been just great to work with. He understands the problem, and, and I think we're going to get that thing resolved pretty well. Um, working with, uh, Forrest, and I should have a, an opinion for him on the sale of city property and what we can and can't do with it. And, uh, I should have that maybe by sometime next week, and I'm sure he'll share that opinion with you folks, so. We, uh, have had some issues, and there's a lot of issues that come up under the radar, uh, with the police department. I've met with the chief and Forrest, and, and come up with some strategies and what to do with problems as they come up, and, uh, and I think, uh, as a result of some of those meetings and positions we've taken, we've saved the city some pretty good money. And, uh, I guess if we think we're right, we're probably gonna, we're gonna be hard-nosed about things, and, and so, as it turned out, worked in our favor. Um, I would like to really give Public Works kind of a kudos, they, uh, I had some potholes over on the road by my office, and I called them, I thought, well, they'll be there in a couple of weeks, maybe, it wasn't a major deal. Couple of days, they had them done. And then on Labor Day, I was, went by my office and stopped for a few minutes, and there's Victor Samore picking up trash, and I'm going, what are you doing, huh? Isn't it a holiday? Well, you, you want to get ahead of the game. So I don't know if he was scheduled to work or not, but I thought, you know, it was, uh, interesting that that people are taking their job seriously and trying to do the best job they can. And whether it was his day off, I assumed it was, but, uh, anyway, it was good to see somebody maybe go on a little bit of the extra mile, but, uh, and, and I think our Public Works department's definitely in that category. Um, anyway, we will continue to, to work and try and get things done, and, uh, and get projects completed as best we can, and, um, I don't really have anything else unless, uh, council has any specific questions, but things are, are going pretty well most of the time, so.
I like what you said about that leave program that, uh, nobody's had to come back into the system. That speaks a lot, I don't know how many you've had through.
We've had quite a few, and we're probably putting more people through than anybody right now, I think, and, uh, and we're trying to catch the kids that are young and get their attention right now, and that's, I think, if you're going to solve the problem, you got to get them before they get into the problem, and try and catch, do more prevention, and once they've developed an addiction or a problem, it's, it's a tough, tough program, so.
That's a great statistic, I, I always used to hear that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Kids Connection.
Okay, good evening. I actually looked back, I haven't been here for three months, so I'm sorry, but summer was insane, and, and barely, I feel like we barely survived it. We had a short break. Um, the summer program, like I said, it was crazy, it was a huge challenge, um, not only for me, but for my staff. We were completely exhausted and really happy when August first came and we were done with it. I'm really sad that school went back into session so quickly, but I don't think that I could have done a couple more weeks of summer, it was just, it was insane. Um, our bus had some issues, so we didn't get to go on a lot of our field trips, um, now that we have a mechanic again. We're hoping to get that resolved, and I hope, I hope that he still has a couple more years of his life left to give us. So, huh? No, yeah, the bus, not the mechanic, yeah, the bus, we just need, we need a little more time with our bus. I, well, I hoped the mechanic too, but I think he deserves a little more than a couple of years. Thank you for pointing that one out. Um, so, summer was a little challenging, just not being able to go out and do some of the field trips that we had planned, but we did our best to keep the kids entertained and busy, um, with what we have available to us, so. We didn't have too many complaints, they really wanted water, um, it was really hard to find a place to provide water to, for them, so that was a, that was a challenge, but we made it through, popsicles made it better. They're like, we have a water day, I don't know how we're going to provide a water day, but I went and bought popsicles, and then they forgot that they wanted a water day, so. We were good. Um, summer attendance, I enrolled, um, so every year at the beginning of the summer program, we start over our enrollment for the calendar year. So our, our calendar year kind of goes from June to June. Um, and we enrolled a hundred and forty-five students into the summer, just the summer program. The beginning of summer, a hundred and forty-five, um, membership packets came throughout the summer. Of those hundred and forty-five children, thirty-eight of them were brand new to the program. And I can almost guarantee you, almost every one of them was like five or six years old. We had so many five, six, and seven-year-olds, that group was like our largest group this summer. Um, we had an average daily attendance of about seventy children each day, and, um, our highest day in June, which was like the first week of June, they really all piled in my doors, we, we had eighty-seven on that first Thursday of the summer. And, um, July, our highest number in July was eighty-five kids in attendance for the day. Um, August first, or August was only one day long for us, but we had sixty-three kids attend on that very last day of the summer program. So I don't know what we did right, or what word got out about the program for the summer, but we've had really high enrollment and really high attendance. Usually- Usually it kinda fluctuates and one day we'll have a few kids and the next day we'll get slammed and then we'll have like a really slow day where you can kinda relax. Um, for us, every day this summer was sixty, seventy, or eighty, close to ninety kids. So it kept us really busy, um, constantly having to go to Plan B to figure out how to keep them active and, and going. Um, let's see, our after-school program kicked off on Oc-, uh, October. I'm ready to fast forward a couple of months. On August fourteenth, um, so we started our school year right as the school district started their first day, so we could provide that service to our parents. Since the beginning, or since the fourteenth, I've enrolled twenty-eight new students into the program. So our numbers are already reaching way higher than we have, and honestly, in the last seven years that I've been with the program. Where I think we're gonna hit probably three hundred kids in attendance this year at least. And we usually break, barely break two hundred, so I'm pretty sure we're gonna, we're gonna meet those goals. After-school attendance has also been pretty insane, sixty-five to seventy. Luckily, it's still really nice out and parents come pick their kids up really early. So by like five-thirty, we're really down in numbers and we'll have maybe thirty left, which is more manageable compared to the sixty-five, seventy. I've been working really close with the school district just to communicate and make sure they're aware of any, like, hiccups we have at the playground or any issues we have with our children, so that they're aware of them the next day when they come into school. The school district has been amazing at communicating with us also, letting us know of some challenges that they had during the school day, just so we can keep an eye on it, um, the very next day. I wanna thank Chief for getting Officer Pino over or getting the Student Resource Officer going with the school district. I don't think he was expecting what we threw at him yesterday. So he had, I guess he had made his way to all of the schools. Bill Metz was his last school to, um, to, to stop by yesterday. And he stopped by at the end of the day and then he accidentally walked over into our playground. We were having some issues with kids crossing the highway, not at crosswalks and running across the street. So he stopped by to check it out and make sure he could have a talk with those kids. Of course, that day, not one child tried to cross the street. But he came into our playground and he was there with us till four-thirty. He actually helped us get across the highway because we were having issues with the crosswalk again, so I really thank him for that. I was like, man, if we only had him every day. He took like thirty kids, surrounded him the whole time. He had them up against the wall doing like handstands, challenging them, and the rest of us staff were just standing there like, we're still here, guys. But it was really awesome. They loved having him stop by. Sorry, we kept him way busier than he, I think he thought. I think he thought he was gonna be in and out really quick and they would not let him go. And that's basically it. I have some upcoming trainings, um, standards of precaution training with our health consultant. You guys actually met him, Paul, who snuck out before I could introduce you. He is our health consultant, um, that we're required to have for state licensing. So he's coming by next week to get one of our, um, trainings done, so that we are compliant with state licensing. And then on Sunday, we actually have a rental at Kids Connection. One of my staff members, um, her family member, her little girl is turning one and so they've asked if they could rent the facility. We've received a hundred dollar donation for utilizing the facility for a couple hours on Sunday. And then the best part is it's a staff member, so I know it's gonna be clean when I come in on Monday, 'cause she has no choice, otherwise she gets to do it on Monday all over again. But other than that, that's really all I have for you. I just wanted to give you some numbers so you can think about how much fun we're having over there. You have any questions?
You do a fantastic job.
It's honestly, it's not me. I do a good job of like managing the chaos. My staff have been amazing. We had some hiccups this summer, but worked through it. They, I wouldn't be able to do it if I didn't have the, the four of them behind me. And my volunteers do. My volunteers have been amazing as well. And to you, Akidos back there, 'cause I think most of you were all part of my program one time or the other. We get always use volunteers after school. We need help in our homework room. I need help with elementary math because it's killing us. Please stop by and hang out with us. All right. Thank you.
You mean Mayor Councils? Um, I actually thought I was the only one that had been here for a while, but since Anika came in front of me, I was like, phew. It's been a while that I don't know where I left up, uh, the last time I reported with you. So on my report, I just kinda went through all the stuff, the, the recreation handles from youth programs to adult programs, community events, uh, Sky High events and the park, uh, reservations. And you can go through the list here. I, I mean, it's a multitude of, uh, events that, that happen and just one after another. And our, my, my, you know, my staff, Kim and Tony do a good job maintaining that and stay and track on top of it. I mean, like anybody, sometimes we fall behind on some things and we try to, you know, we're in a hurry and try to get those things done, but they're being getting, uh, done. They're getting complete. This summer, you know, like every, every summer, it was a busy summer for us with the youth programs happening and all the events at the Sky High, uh, preparations of the Sky High facility and preparations of the softball facilities and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a busy, busy year for us, you know? And like they've been talking about the facilities coming up, uh, the Sky High, the, you know, the new building. I can't wait. It seems like I blink my eyes and when I open, it's right there. So, uh, I'm already, I don't know if I'm getting ahead of myself, but I'm already working on the schedule of things that we can do there, daily and all day to get that building used, 'cause that's the only way that we're gonna be able to maintain it, by actually using it more than what we, I mean, we, I have no doubt that we're just gonna be used. I know that we're gonna be using it. So I'm already looking on, on some schedules of what things that we can do, programs that we can run. And, uh, if you has, if you guys have any ideas, the community wanna see something new, wanna, you know, try something, let us know. We, we're always happy, open to, to try anything, so. Here on the, uh, on the last, almost on the second page of my report, uh, after all the events that happened there, I just wanna, you know, do a couple of things, the programs that we're looking at. I've been talking to Forrest about it. Uh, we're actually looking at a couple of grants, uh, the, to apply for. One is the U.S. Football Grant. Uh, it's about fifty thousand dollars grant. Um, if we get it, then that will help us with the, uh, most costly, uh, sport, which is the purchase of helmets, shoulder, shoulder pads. And all that is just for the protection of the kids, you know, when they play. That's something that we have to constantly be checking, constantly be updating the helmets, you know, just to prevent less concussions and injuries. So, um, Kim is actually the one that talked to, uh, told me about the grant and she's getting the, the information, so we can apply for it and hopefully we can, we can get some out of that. The other one is a, uh, looking at a dog park, uh, grant. We, I talked to Forrest about this. We met a couple of times about what the plans, how it's gonna work. And it looks like, uh, it might be something that we can go ahead and do. So I'm just waiting to hear from, uh, one of the questions that Forrest has is if, when we apply for the grant and if we get it, how soon before we get the funds in and start working on it? So I'm just waiting for my response from them to let me know, so we can get that going. And before we start, you know, with all that, I would like to have some community meetings with, you know, with the community to hear the input, what, as far as location, what they would like to see in the park and, and all that stuff. So maybe here in about, I would say maybe a month or so, I'll start scheduling some meetings with the community and see what their response is as far as that. But I think it will help us keeping our softball fields a little bit clean when our kids play for that. Let's see. And like Emily's, you know, mentioned earlier, you know, we are involved with RGGP. We, it seems like lately I've been a little busy and haven't attended a lot of meetings, but, uh, I like to be involved with the program. I think it's a good program. Their focus on what they're trying to do to prevent, uh, our youth from reaching something that we, it's, kills them, is, that's, that's great. And anything that we can do to help, you know, I'm there, so. And, uh, last but not least, you know, at the end, I would like to take, uh, thank all of our volunteers, coaches, officials, scorekeepers that help us with our programs, because without them, I mean, it's, it's hard to get this going. And, uh, especially with the parents, 'cause the kids cannot drive themselves to the practice, to the games. And so I know it's busy being a parent, getting out of work, can't even prepare dinner, 'cause you have to take the kid to the game at five-thirty, so it's, it's, I, we really appreciate that. But, yeah, I just wanna, hope that they understand that it'll pay off in the future, you know, pay off. So, uh, that's pretty much all I have in my report. If you, if anybody would like to volunteer, like, you know, we always need the help, you can reach out to me. You can call the City of Maravista, go on our city page and, uh, you can get some information there. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or concerns or anything they have heard, not heard. All right. Thank, oh, one last thing that I didn't have in my report. I have one, um, discount. I, I have a rental for the Sky High and they're requesting a discount for, for the rental. So like always, it's, uh, it's had to be approved by the council. So I'll leave this here, so you guys can review it. All the information's on the last page of what the discount will be and the final price will be, so, and then you guys sign it or approve it. I'll just get it back.
What is that event supposed to be, Hymie?
This one. Uh, this one is for the Rock Summer Fest, so October thirty-first.
Okay, so we'll actually include that in the next council.
You want to put it in the next one? Okay, we can do that. All right. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Council Committee, City Commission, Council Report. Kathy, do you have anything to report?
No, I hope everyone goes out and has some potato festival, this would get.
Ditto what she said. I hope everybody goes to the Potato Festival and, uh, bring your, your people to the booth, because we're gonna be talking about the tax initiative and that's really important to everyone in town. All the council members are gonna be there kind of round-robin-ing that booth and we'd love to share with you any information and help you answer questions that you might have. And it's been kind of a quiet month council-wise. I have, I've been rainbowed. I'm glad to see you have too.
Don't use the word quiet. Just slow.
Okay.
Learn that from PD.
There you go.
Victor?
I really don't have anything. Uh, just keep your eyes open, keep your eyes peeled. People walking out in the streets, uh, you never know who you're gonna see and what type of events can happen that you might be able to relate to after seeing an individual walking around. It's just a, uh, a community thing, I think, that we have to just kinda stick together and watch out for each other.
Gary?
Not a lot that hasn't already been discussed, but, uh, was that the, the RGG meeting, the, the, the Sky High, um, presentation? And, uh, just a lot of what's going on, just, there seems to be a, a change and uplift. There's, uh, there's some positive going on and a lot, a lot of good that's happening. Obviously, we have the Kids Connections. Talk about economic development today. That's, uh, that's overwhelming and, uh, yeah, we need, we need to talk about your bus, so. A poor old thing. I've been there, done that and, uh, yeah, you need, you need that help. Yeah, other than that, that's about it. But yeah, Potato Festival coming up and, and a lot of other good things coming up that, that we'll try to get everybody, uh, apprised of. Ty and I have been sharing some, some exciting ideas and, uh, we'll, we'll bring you some more news about that here very shortly.
Very good. Well, mine's gonna be just a wee bit lengthy. First off, I wanna thank Public Works too, 'cause they've done an amazing job of the city. We see them all the time. The gentleman that runs the sprinklers in the parks, usually he's out there in the parks before anybody else hits the streets.
That's Victor.
He does a great job and he's super quiet every time I see him, so, um. That's really good. And the rock, I don't know if you people have been seeing the posting on the rock. It's dwindled to a little bit. There's only three of them I seen. But, uh, I did that for the food bank rock and it was a lot of fun. A lot of, a lot of good fun. And that was huge. They got, I don't know, we got over three hundred pounds of food that we packed from over here all the way to the food bank and back, so, um, it's not as bad as what people think it might be. It's not military rock, so it's casual pace, okay? And they usually have a relief vehicle if somebody wants to do it and they don't feel like they can make it. Somebody will take them back to their vehicle. So if you wanna get involved in that, it is a lot of fun.
Mayor?
Yes.
Hymie?
Next.
Wednesday's night, we're about, we're gonna try to do a, like a Patriot March. Most of the first responders, hopefully, will show up. Be a little bigger, so it happens to be on a night.
Nice. Very good. So people need to attend, 'cause it, it is a lot of fun.
What time does that begin?
Six.
Six o'clock.
Maybe here, right?
Yeah, on the west side of the building.
Yep. And they've been picking up trash and they were carrying around bags and picking up trash. So it's, it's a good, a good thing for the community. So, and then getting to community, what everybody says, it is our community and the watchful eyes and the taking care of what you see and keeping an eye on your neighbor. That's truly important, so it's everybody sitting in here, you young people in the back, it's our community. And that includes you guys, so I really appreciate you guys being here tonight, by the way. Um, the Sky High Park deal, I am probably as excited as everybody about this because, uh, being on Fairmore for the length of time I was, trying to get something in motion forever ago. Uh, it's pretty exciting to see where we're at today from ten years ago. It's really exciting to me. And, uh, I went to State Fair. They had Mayor's Day. And Forrest, just to note to you, I behaved myself. Thank you, sir. I represented my vest very well. It was really a lot of fun. Got to meet quite a few mayors. There was thirty-seven mayors from across Colorado. There was people there from the valley that I've never seen before, so it was kinda interesting. A lot of the big city representation. We had about thirty-minute meeting, uh, welcoming meeting, actually, is what it was. And then they just turned the suicide on fairgrounds and it was a lot of fun. I got to actually be interviewed by KRD TV. And because I didn't freeze up in front of the camera, I got on the news. And it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. It was nice to see, there's a lot of people there, so people that have never attended the State Fair need to take the opportunity to do it, 'cause, uh, the use of the 4-H and FFA that are represented at the State Fair was incredible from all over the state. I don't know how many entries they had, but it was amazing, the talent that some of these kids have in all the projects. Uh, we had a young man from Center, so it'd be Suatch County, who took, uh, Grand Champion State in robotics. So it was really cool. So outside of that, that's pretty much what I have. Like I said, again, I wanna thank you high school kids for being here this evening. I know you have to be, but I appreciate it. So that is all I have. I know we need to go into executive session, but I need my angle, please. It's the drag one. It's the drag board.
I do not have that.
You don't? We can go ahead and move to executive session. All right, you can move to executive session, Mayor, then declare recess, so the folks can clear out and the high school kids can get their papers signed. Okay, so we can do a virtual signature, so we're, we will declare a recess. So do you have a motion? Yeah, would you have a motion to go to recess for five minutes and then we can come back to convening executive session?
I would move for recess for five minutes.
I second that motion.
It's been moved in seconds, any discussion? Jenny?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Recess for five minutes. You go ahead.